...special board meeting will now come to order. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Moke, roll call please.
Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Buckholz?
Mrs. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Curry?
Here.
Mrs. Dean Brozian?
Here.
Mr. Drouba?
Here.
All right, public participation. Do you have any public participation forms? Oh yeah, okay, someone handed it out. All right. Members of the public who wish to address the board should fill out the yellow public participation form and hand it to Mrs. Moke, the board recording secretary. She will call your name when it is your turn to speak. I would like to remind members of the audience that speakers should identify themselves and limit your comments to three minutes or less. If your comments have substantially been reflected in others, we would ask in the interest of time that you please pass on making them and that you provide the board with any copies of written material that you may have. Oh, I think this is old. This is like an old one. I'm going to ad lib it because I'm like, sorry. Clearly, I didn't reread this. But basically, keep your comments to three minutes. I will inform you when there's 30 seconds left. I'll stop you at three minutes. If you haven't finished your comments, you can give them to Mrs. Moke, the board recording secretary, or you can email them to the board. If you have any questions raised, we'll be forwarded to the appropriate D-41 staff representative for response if a response is warranted and if the member of the public provides the appropriate contact information. Okay?
Kristin Traver.
I want to start by apologizing first. My last child is at her last band concert right now at Hadley, so I need to scoot out as soon as I am done. But I did not want to miss the opportunity to thank Erica for your dedication to serving the children of District 41 for 12 years. I first met you 14 years ago when Sam was a kid. Are you that old?
A little gray here.
Ending my first ever PTA meeting at Churchill, you immediately impressed me as someone who was passionate, thoughtful, dedicated, and knowledgeable about all things related to education. I remember being amazed that you even knew what was going on with the legislation in Springfield, how it might impact our schools, and advising us on what we should do to make a difference. After you left that position in the PTA, it was very hard to fill it, so thank you for taking that on. I feel fortunate to have spent so many years serving on the PTA with you. Your leadership and willingness to volunteer for everything did not go unnoticed, and I have no doubt you inspired many people to get more involved. Your efforts with the community outreach program has made hundreds of families feel recognized and loved during the holidays and in times of need. And I will never forget the meeting, Jen Malik was with me, when a small group of us approached you and said, "Erica, you should really think about running for the school board." How right we were. In your 12 years on the board, you have continued to amaze me with your optimism, your insight, resiliency in the face of challenges, unwavering professionalism, collaborative nature, and compassion. I have no doubt that children were at the heart of every decision you made. I cannot imagine the number of phone calls, emails, and hours of meetings that you have attended, not to mention all of the school and community events I know you attend, all for the benefit of our children. Even after your own children were out of D-41, you continued to support this community like the children were your own. Now, as a teacher in the district, I appreciate the time that you make to visit Churchill, to attend our special events. You show up on the first day, you step into our classrooms, you talk with my students about their learning, and you are present in so many ways.
30 seconds.
You are always willing to listen about my successes and challenges. I'm grateful for your interest and support. In closing, you are one of the people I truly admire the most in this community. Your impact will not be forgotten. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for the gift of your time, and I hope now you have time you can enjoy for yourself. Thank you so much.
Karen Winter.
So I have to follow a crier. I'm a crier myself. My name is Karen Winter. I've been a District 41 parent for 17 years. This is my last year. I'm here also to celebrate Erica, who graciously, as we know, served the board for 12 years. Just like Kristin, I met Erica at my first PTA meeting in 2002, when my oldest daughter, who's graduating college next week, was in kindergarten. Erica started speaking about education bills within the state legislation, and I just thought to myself, "Who is this woman? How does she know all this stuff? Like, we're just moms." But in time, I came to realize that Erica really is the most thoughtful, ethical, and intelligent woman I've ever encountered. I'm lucky enough that I've worked closely with Erica on a project that's been near and dear to both of us, community outreach. History on that program, in 2002, Lincoln School had a large influx of refugees. They were expected, maybe 15 or 20 refugee children, and they ended up with over 90. The parents and staff at Lincoln tirelessly worked to find clothing and winter boots, school supplies, winter coats for these families that were new to our country. The Glen Allen Children's Resource Center was also started about the same time with tutoring in the basement of an apartment building. Over the next year or two, Erica heard about the efforts of the Lincoln families and basically said, "These children belong to all of us, and we all need to help." It was at another Churchill PTA meeting where Erica told us about her idea, and me, with my youngest baby, and Raby Bjorn, asked her how I could be part of it. That was 14 years ago, and that baby is graduating Hadley this year. Over the years, community outreach really has helped thousands of children, and I'm not exaggerating when I say thousands of children. We've brought school snacks, school supplies, gym shoes, winter coats, snow pants, boots, hats, gloves, everything that these kids could need. We brighten the holidays for these same children with toys and books and gift cards for clothing and groceries. Community outreach really was the start of community helping community. Erica, I thank you for your vision, for seeing that we needed to embrace our fabulously diverse district, that we need to help our brothers and sisters who are in need and show them that they're not alone in this community. On behalf of all those children who are so blessed to have you in their corner, I say thank you. On my own, I say thank you for giving the opportunity to volunteer with such a fabulous group of women who helped change our little pocket of the world.
Thank you.
Liz Vogel.
Good evening. I'm Liz Vogel. As a District 41 parent, I want to personally and publicly thank Erica Nelson for her 12 years of service to District 41. 12 years is such a long time that the kids who were in kindergarten during Erica's first year will very soon be seniors in high school. A full generation of students, including my own three kids, have benefited from her leadership. There have been some tough moments in the past 12 years, but Erica has always maintained her professional demeanor, positive attitude, and focus on the students. Everyone knowledgeable about District 41 is aware of Erica's service to the district, but people may not know that Erica spends most of her free time in service with other organizations, with her church, with various causes, and assisting friends and neighbors. And this is in addition to her full-time job, board work, and family. One would think that, once she retires from the board, that she would have more leisure time, but I suspect she won't. And will fill up her time with even more public service. She's a role model, and I'm proud to call her my friend. I would also like to pass on the following comments from Dean Elger, former District 41 board member who served with Erica. To the people of District 41, I wish I could be here tonight with you to celebrate a dear friend, mentor, role model, and example of the best type of American that any of us could aspire to be. Erica was instrumental in mentoring me about public service. She spent many hours discussing all types of topics about education, public service, and our responsibility to step forward and serve. And this was way before I ever decided to run for the D-41 school board. In my time on the board, I attended many statewide trainings and meetings concerning education in Illinois. And without exception, when I told a new friend where I was from, they would say how lucky I was to have a colleague like Erica Nelson in my community. Erica set an example for the rest of us in her studying of issues, preparation for meetings, and professionalism of discourse in public and private. It is not uncommon for her to invest literally hundreds of hours of months in serving the district, but it isn't just her efforts that impress, but the quality of results those efforts create and the consistency of those results for more than a dozen years. It is commonplace today in America to stand and applaud those who have served. I would like to ask you to join me in standing and applauding another American who served to make our community safer, better, and certainly more educated and informed.
30 seconds.
My dear friend and life teacher, Erica Nelson. Thank you, Dean Elger, former D-41 board member.
And, uh...
Thank you.
Oh. Thank you. Thank you, Liz.
Hi, my name is Kim Lutz, and I'm a rule follower, and I know I'm not supposed to repeat anything that others have said. So my remarks will be a little difficult to wade through, but I just wanted to say thank you to Erica. We are friends. We met when our boys were nine, so I think that makes it 12 years ago, so an entire lifetime on the school board, which to me seems like a really long time. We've worked on several initiatives during that time. All of them are, at the core, related to the welfare and well-being of children. I can honestly say that I've never worked with someone with more integrity, purpose, positivity, and oh boy, endless amounts of energy. I had hoped that Gilda Ross, another well-known ball of energy, could have been here tonight to help make Erica blush, but she had a GPS event, of course, tonight and is unable to be here. I spoke with Gilda a few weeks ago about you, Erica, and she had many things, wonderful things, to say, but one quote that she said really stood out, and I asked her if I could say it here tonight. And Gilda said this, "In the worst moments, you see the very finest of Erica." I could not agree more. I've seen it many, many times. I'm so proud to call you my friend. Erica says that we never, ever graduate, and she's pulled me into many, many endeavors that I am very proud to have been involved with now. So I have no doubt that you'll continue to give back, Erica, as you always do in every aspect of your life. I am proud to be your friend. Congratulations on a job very well done.
Barry Nelson?
Oh, Jesus.
A surprise, it sounds like.
Surprise.
And so nicely dressed, my dear.
Barry Nelson, homeowner in the community for 21 years, and I'm proud...
I'd like to say that I'm frequently known for this group and the people in the community as Erica's husband. I'd like to speak tonight about the incredible work that Erica has done over the past 12 years for this community and for the children of District 41. Erica has an almost unparalleled, I believe, reputation in our community among teachers and staff of District 41. Her reputation has been earned through hundreds of conversations with teachers and staff, attending PTA meetings, attending many, many events, concerts, plays, and other programs. Erica understands and appreciates the incredible work done in our classrooms every day. She has advocated for teachers and staff to give them the facilities and tools necessary to teach our students. However, Erica did not just connect with teachers and staff. She met with scores of community members to hear their thoughts and ideas and to answer any questions they had. This included meeting with members of the community that may have disagreed with positions that Erica has taken. She was always professional in these sometimes challenging discussions. Erica was a very prepared board member. She took her responsibility seriously and came to each meeting prepared to ask questions and to participate in all board discussions. The floor and couch in her home office is still full of paper and binders, representing many years of work of the boards of education in this community. By serving on the board for 12 years, Erica was often sought out by other board members looking to understand what may have happened during her tenure. She also talked with community members considering running for the board to answer any questions that they may have. Erica believes in the importance of continuing education for the board members, teachers, and staff, and she always understood and supported attending conferences. She also continued her board training throughout her 12 years of service. Erica served capably, very capably, as the president of the board for two years. Her term was not without its challenges, but she always maintained a professional demeanor, chaired very effective meetings, and worked tirelessly to advance the district's strategic plan. I also know that Erica is very proud of the work that she and other board members did to replace portable classrooms with newly constructed spaces in her elementary schools and now for Hadley. More than anyone else in our community, I know what Erica has sacrificed for the past 12 years. Community members, teachers, and staff have frequently received email messages from Erica at 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM. She has been able to manage her busy personal and professional life while at the same time doing what she could do to improve the education that is provided to the children of our community. Erica and I will continue to remain involved in the district even though our children have left Churchill and Hadley many years ago. I know that the members of our community join me in recognizing and thanking Erica for her extraordinary service to District 41.
Thank you, honey.
Tara Costa Howard.
I haven't even started yet. I can't believe it. Okay. I'm Tara Costa Howard. I am a former board member, and I am a 22-year resident here in Glen Allen. And I'm here to talk about my friend, Erica Nelson, the great collaborator. As a former board member that had the honor of serving with Erica, it's hard to put her last 12 years into words. We cannot quite define the work she did on behalf of the children of District 41, but for all of the children in our community. Erica is all about the three Cs: communicate, collaborate, and community. Communicate is something she always does. During my time with Erica, there wasn't a meeting that didn't go by where she didn't reach into her bag and pull out a file with an article that she read from a publication that many of us probably had access to but hadn't quite found that little square nook in there that gave us some valuable factual information on a topic maybe we talked about once or twice, but Erica had taken that 10 steps further. Or, as is already talked about, that 2:00 AM phone call, or excuse me, that 2:00 AM email that we didn't see until maybe 6:00 AM the next morning. And those usually came after a long, difficult meeting that may have included closed session to further discuss an emotional topic. Oh, and many of you know that that email usually was something positive that got lost in the ugly messaging that may have gone on throughout that meeting, but Erica always kept it positive and reminded us of that with that 2:00 AM email. Now, not one of us former board members can even hold a candle to the work that she did regularly, recruiting volunteers for committees, events that were being held that she attended, or when she was that usual stand-in board member because somebody else had something to do. Erica always found that time to attend that PTA meeting, that band concert, or that lovely morning president's meeting with our superintendents. Or how about the families that she served during the holidays and throughout that year, or the coats that kept those children warm and safe on our playgrounds? Now, collaborate means different things to different people, but ironically, especially given the past few years of her tenure, that definition includes...
30 seconds.
To cooperate, we're going to go over 30 seconds today, to cooperate, usually willingly, with an enemy nation. But for Erica, she always cooperated to do what was best for the children of the district and our staff, to move things forward in a manner that was respectful, that encouraged communication and collaboration across the district. Now, unfortunately, the enemy was often those people who maybe didn't decide whose decisions were being made for the best for our kids.
Can you share, are you almost done?
I'm almost done. But for Erica, she did not allow the enemy to ever succeed. She stood up to bullies. She stood in front of staff when people attacked them. She answered to our taxpayers as good stewards for their dollars, and she always made decisions where children were the ones who were going to receive those good works.
Okay, I think...
But at the end of the day, the people who were...
I need to stop you.
But at the end of the day, the people who every single decision was made were the direct recipients, were the children. I want to thank you, Erica, for your years of service to our children and our community. Our district has never been the same since you were elected. Thank you for being my friend, my fellow community member, and the best board member we could ever elect. And now to the three new board members.
Ms. Howard, can you please share your thoughts with them?
Absolutely. Our community spoke loud and clear.
No, can you share them written? I'm trying to follow protocol. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but...
Well, we've spent a long time doing that.
I'm asking if you can just please share your thoughts with them in an email, please.
I will, absolutely.
Thank you.
Our community spoke loud and clear at the ballot box.
Maybe there's somebody else who will go over his time.
We hope that you have the courage to stand up the way Erica has done for the last 12 years. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I just got here. I apologize. I was coming all the way from Granger School down in Aurora, New York, so I apologize for being a little late to the party. Good evening. My name is Kristin Massey Kramer, and I am a former District 41 parent and a current community member, well, still a community member. First, I'd like to welcome our three soon-to-be-seeded new board members, Jessica Bottomer, Tadessis, and Julie Hill. I believe that each of you will bring your own new lens, new balance, and needed balance to the Board of Education. During your campaigns, you each demonstrated your own passion and willingness to advocate for the children of District 41. I look forward to the knowledge, thoughtfulness, leadership abilities, and collaboration skills that each of you will bring to the board. I would also like to thank your spouses and your families for allowing to give your time to the district for the next four years. 12 years. Just think about the last 12 years. 12 years ago, I was in my 30s. I'm not even going to tell you how old I am today, but just know that I was in my 30s. My children were five and seven, and they are now a junior in high school and a freshman in college. Much has happened in 12 years. That's 4,380 days. 4,380, well, not counting the leap years, but that's 4,380 days that Erica Nelson has attended board meetings, CIT meetings, council, PTA meetings, president's meetings, other PTA meetings, attended PTA events, band concerts, sporting events, talked with teachers and staff, visited classrooms, talked on the phone with community members, met with community members, and inspired the lives of students. I think it's safe to say that Erica has given a significant amount of free of her time, as well as her heart, to the students, the teachers, the staff, the administration, parents, and community members of this district. Erica is thoughtful, she is kind, she is smart, she is collaborative, she is passionate, she is honest, an avid listener, a thinker, a leader, and more than anything, a friend. Our paths crossed...
30 seconds.
When she was through her board work and through my work on the PTA, and I'm blessed to have worked with her over the last seven and eight years. We have spent much time in this very board meeting, meals together, coffee, spoken on the phone for hours, sometimes at 7:00 AM, sometimes at 11:00 PM. I'm grateful for your advice, your wisdom, and your friendship. And while your work here at District 41 has come to a conclusion, I am grateful that you and I will continue to work together on behalf of children and students throughout Illinois. I thank you, Erica Nelson, for everything that you have done. I thank you, Barry Nelson. I thank you, Carl and Corinne Nelson, for giving your mom to the students of District 41 for the last 12 years.
William Schimacher?
I'm William Schimacher, resident of Glen Allen with former students in District 41. And to finish up Tara's comments, so to our three new board members, our community spoke loud and clear at the ballot box about what they value and what we value as a community. Please continue to communicate, collaborate, and work for our community. They voted you in to be board members like Erica. I know that you're all up for the challenge and hope you'll continue her legacy. Trust me, don't be surprised if you receive that 2:00 AM email because she will continue to be involved. And push us all to be our best.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. I'll read this here. Acceptance of DuPage County Election Authority's Canvas of the Vote. I would like to recommend that the Board of Education accept the DuPage County Election Authority's Canvas of Votes for the April 2, 2019 Consolidated Election. May I have a motion to accept the Canvas of Votes for the April 2, 2019 election?
No, we shouldn't.
Second. I do roll call. It's your all in favor. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
That threw me off a little bit there. Okay. All right. Turn it over to you.
Yeah. Brief recognition of our retiring board members from the Illinois Association of School Boards for Erica Nelson. Thank you. For Stephanie, the Illinois Association of School Boards, you're about to be a member of the board as well. Thank you for your service, your time, your commitment. There is a lot, as everybody has said, that goes into this work, and I sincerely appreciate everything that board members do and for your time and commitment. So thank you. Retiring board members.
Do you have anything you want to say, Erica?
I do. I've actually typed something up. But go ahead.
Go ahead. You can go. You go ahead. I'll follow my protocol, let you go first.
Okay. So I want to thank the community and thank you for all the kind words tonight. For the privilege of serving the students of Glen Allen District 41 for the past 12 years, I believe in our educators, staff, the administrative leadership, and our building leaders, principals, and assistant principals. Each day when they walk into their classroom, office, lunchroom, or work area, you do so to educate or support each child to reach their full range of abilities and potential. I have learned over these three terms that the imperfect nature of education and the complexity of facilitating learning. I have been fortunate to witness joyful students and proud educators over that time. 12 years is a long time to commit to one area as a volunteer. The fact that members of this community elected me to continue my service over three terms has been an honor. And while I have more gray hair, the highlights of my tenure outweigh the lowlights. Most of the stewardship provided by board members that I have served with has been done to further educational opportunities for all students. The first two terms I served, beginning 2007, focused on more obvious district needs at the time, including upgrading classroom educational spaces with technology that felt foreign and uncomfortable. For many educators and staff members, it was change, big change, that thing that most people dread and resist until we test our ability to learn something new and apply it. It is the essence of what occurs each day in the classrooms across District 41, to be adaptable, flexible, challenge oneself, expect not to be perfect the first time you're learning something new. As Lincoln School's retiring principal, Linda Schweikoffer, who's here tonight, said to her students, "You're not there yet." There is power in a mindset that both students and adults have the capacity to continue to learn and grow their knowledge and talents. And thank you for that, Linda. Portable classrooms that, in fact, were not so portable were removed under the critical leadership of Dr. Gordon. When the board in 2013 charged him with delivering a plan to remove them and replace them with permanent classrooms under one roof was the guidance and the goal. I am proud of the members of the board who voted to replace the portable classrooms at our elementary schools and the board finance committee at that time, Patrick Escalante, Joe Potchensky, and Drew Ellis, working with the administration side by side to make this a reality. And I... our elementary schools and the board finance committee at that time, Patrick Escalante, Joe Potchinsky, and Drew Ellis, working with the administration side by side to make this a reality. And I am grateful to our community for their support to improve the facilities across the district these past 12 years, to invest in the quality of our buildings and spaces where our children learn and play and where our educators and staff help them grow. I want to thank Dr. Gordon, Paul, and his staff, especially Dave Scarmardo, and his team of dedicated, behind-the-scenes District 41 staff members for the fantastic work that allowed us to meet this critical goal. It could not have been done without you. For our students and our educators and our staff. Challenging educational programs, a district culture that fosters inclusive education, foreign language in our elementary schools, dual language at Churchill, and increasing the critical thinking skills of students through problem-based learning opportunities set up the students of District 41 for success in high school and wherever their life leads them. And I know that to be true. And consciously improving in areas that do not meet the standards of a model school district is the ongoing charge for a board and administration as partners and ambassadors for children. I have learned in my time as an elected member of this body that words have weight. Words can diminish people's spirit and belief in their work. Words also inspire and empower. I am a fortunate board member to have the support of the tireless Mrs. Nancy Moke. Her commitment to the Board of Education's work cannot be translated into words, and yes, in fact, she and I did have 1:00 a.m. emails every once in a while. I have served with exceptional parent volunteers and am privileged to have attended evening and daytime programs at each school that are only possible, only possible, with the leadership of our school's Parent Teacher Association. I have served with many intelligent and dedicated board members these past 12 years. I am leaving with a deeper and broader appreciation for the classroom educator and the staff members who start each day with hello. Lastly, I have served with many, many dedicated and remarkable administrators. This current cabinet and Dr. Paul Gordon. Thank you to every community member who reached out to me over these years through email or with a call. I trust that I gave you time that you needed in my responsibility as a Board of Education member for District 41. And my very best wishes for my remaining board colleagues and for the new members who will be seated tonight. I have a small gift of a new, clean, brand-new journal for you to start your new year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You know, there was a record you had to beat there, Erica.
I know. Yeah, previous board members. No, I was giving claps about that.
And you know who we're talking about out there if you're watching. I'm going to keep this short. Like Erica, I have a few things down on my phone, and seriously, my eyes are going. I'm going to need to be like my mom and make my font like one word on the screen. So I'll just read from this. So, today is my last, and last day on the board after four years, in four years. I was thinking about that when you run for a board, people should tell you it's four years, but figure it's like dog years. So it's really more like 28. And do I have any gray hair yet? And I swear, I didn't know Erica had that in hers. So there's a theme. So, between D-41 and my kids, it's bound to start sooner than later. So, though it's not always easy, I'm proud of the work I've done for the district. I ran for the board to make a difference, and I believe that I did. I'm proud that I did it with integrity and honesty, and I wasn't afraid to make some tough decisions. Thanks to my family, who put up with me missing out on events because of so many meetings. I'm looking forward to having more time for those basketball games, lacrosse games, and band concerts that I've missed over the years. Thanks to my friends for the phone calls and advice and always keeping it real. Thanks to the community members who put their faith in me to represent them on the school board. Thanks to board members, admin, teachers, staff, students, who supported me along the way. I learned so much from many of you, and I'm thankful for what you've done for the students in D-41, especially my own children. Your dedication is admirable. I'm not going to run through the names because you know who you are, and I will thank, I'll thank everyone in person. And you'll see me around as I have at least five more years with kids in D-41, and there's more work to be done to ensure we're meeting the needs of all of our students. Some advice for my fellow board members and incoming board members. Number one, listen to Nancy Moke. She, I can't express that enough. She's the heart of the operation around here. Make sure you're informed, read your board packets, ask questions in advance. Don't be afraid of having differing opinions. In the end, I know we're all here for the same reason, we want what's best for kids. We may have differing views on how to get there. Try to reach the middle ground when you can, but don't be afraid to stand on your principles if that's not possible. You'll be surprised what you learn from each other. I was fortunate to serve with a lot of great people and serve with Kurt, who's one of the best, and I'm proud of what we have accomplished. And I just wish everyone the best of luck moving forward, and thank you. Thanks. All right. We're done with that. Ready to move on to the oath? Okay. Oath of Office for, oh, sorry.
We got this. We got this.
I'm like, did I mess it up? I'm following this. Nancy, I just said, "Listen to you," and I'm following what you gave me. Okay. So, oath of office for elected board members. At this time, I would invite the elected board members, Jessica Buttermer, Ted Estes, and Julie Hill, to join me in the oath of office in unison. So, do we stand up here?
Yeah, if you can come out there and, yeah, right there. Stephanie, you can go around the table and kind of look towards us. I'm going to kind of...
Picture?
Yeah. I don't need some more ball dude than I do.
Yeah, I do. It's hard for you to be reading it at the same time at a different place, at a different tone, and it was clunky and... Because you have to read it together. I mean, it's like a choir.
Yeah, listen to the last one.
Did you crack it?
No.
Really? I told you.
Oh, no, it wasn't good. It wasn't good.
I will now, sir, and the newly-elected members of the board. Please be along with me. Not like a wedding where I...
You can all read this. One big choral reading.
Aye.
You're all using your names. Teachers, we have...
I will formally discharge the duties of the Office of Member of Board Education of Glen Allen District 41 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I swear that I shall respect past pair of interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek appearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes to such decisions through ethical and instructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility of my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in this school. I shall foster within the board the extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set up the course for District 41. I shall establish an established structure and an environment designed to mature all students and the opportunity to retain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions of training and education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision of District 41, and I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead this school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board that created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skill, knowledge, citizenship, and personal...
Kevin's going to adjourn the current board, and then you guys can come up.
Okay. Whew. That was really long. We should try to shorten that. Oh, wait, we just changed it. Never mind. Okay. Inasmuch as there is no further business to come before this board, a motion for adjournment is needed?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I don't need to say that you're president. I don't need to do any of that.
Just turn over. I will be the president pro tem for a few moments. Stephanie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Yep.
Erica, get your, um... Oh. Hey, honey. You want to thank her?
Yeah.
All right. Julie, you're there. Come on. It must be Erica.
She didn't put it in the better board now. Erica Nelson.
Good evening, everybody. As President Pro Tem, I called the new board of Glen Allen School District 41 to order. Ms. Moke, roll call.
Dr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Buttermer?
Here.
Mr. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Ambrosio?
Here.
Mr. Estes?
Here.
Mr. Still?
Here.
Here. I would like to call for nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Robert. Here we go.
Thank you. Second.
I actually, I'd like to nominate Bruce. I thought about this quite a bit. Everybody's course is very capable, but, you know, we had lots of conversation about education even back in, before being on the board and you being a bilingual teacher and me being like a former ESL student, I was really interested in that aspect. And, you know, I found that you're tough on yourself as a, like a teacher, tough on the adults that support the students, but you have a very compassionate approach to educating students, and I think it's, you know, it's a great trait to have and to have as a board president. So I hope you accept the nomination.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, we have two individuals who've been nominated for the Board President. We will start with Mr. Curry. Mrs. Moke, roll call for votes on Mr. Curry.
Dr. Bruno?
That seems weird in this situation. No offense, Bruce, but no.
Wait, sir?
Mr. Buttermer?
No.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrosio?
Yes and no.
I get it.
I understand. I got you.
Mr. Estes?
No.
Mr. Still?
No.
Mr. Still, what?
And then now, maybe Robert. I'm going to say that.
All right. The next person up is Dr. Bruno. Mrs. Moke, roll call for Dr. Bruno.
Dr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Buttermer?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
No.
Mr. Ambrosio?
No.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Lobach?
We're advised.
Okay, by a five to vote, Dr. Bruno is the Board President.
Thank you.
All right, now, but we do need to hand this down to my new board president right there.
Oh, you mean, I have to do something now?
You are alive. You are alive. So, President-elect, you will be doing the election of the other officers.
All right, I'll give it a shot.
All right. Let's see how you do.
As long as I can read what Ms. Moke wrote, I can probably do it. All right. This would be for the Office of Vice President. I'd like to call for nominations for the Office of Vice Presidents. Once the nominations are made, do the nominees wish to make a statement? Following nominee opportunities to make a statement, whether there be any discussion, pulling any discussion, I would like to call for a vote. So, at this point, I would like to request any nominations for Vice President? Cannot, and by the way, am I in a position to nominate?
Yeah, you can nominate.
Then I'd like to nominate Jason Lobach for Vice President.
Second. Second?
Are...
Any other nominations?
Any? I do not. Are there any other nominations for Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Linda Ambrosio.
Do we? Good enough? Do we have a second for Linda's nomination?
Second.
I was expecting, I was expecting that. Any is, well, I think we had opportunities for discussion, and that has passed. So, Ms. Moke, for Mr. Lobach? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
No.
Mr. Ambrosio?
No.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Lobach?
Oh, yeah. Get out of that signing thing. Do I need to vote?
We're going to...
We need to do...
We do need to roll call. Okay. And also, we have a nomination for Vice President for Linda, please.
Dr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Buttermer?
No.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
No.
Mr. Still?
No.
Mr. Lobach?
Sorry, but I don't want to sign things anymore. So, according to, according to that vote, by a five to two vote, Jason Lobach assumes the position of Vice President of the new board.
Moving up. Moving up.
We have, we have one more office built, the Office of Secretary, and I'd like to call for nominations for the Office of Secretary, please. If no one, no one is stepping up to offer a nomination at this point, then they're looking at you like you were going to nominate. No, I'm just asking.
All right, I'll nominate myself. If I can't be the VP, I'm going to be the secretary.
I will gladly nominate you. I just want to be so lucky. If you have to, I would gladly nominate.
I second.
Thank you. We have a second. I was trying to ask. Are there, are there any other nominations for Secretary of the Board?
Make it contested.
Everyone's going twice. Very once, very twice. Third, so we do not have one nomination and the...
We'll record this as a unanimous vote.
Very good, wonderful. Congratulations. Paul, I see on the agenda, the action items, would it be appropriate at this time, I had had some comments that I wanted to read, but I wanted to defer to after we went through election of officers. Seem more appropriate to do it at this time? All right. So, it's good to see everybody here tonight. I want to express my gratitude to the current board for extending to Jason and Linda and me the privilege of serving as board officers for the next two years. I also want to thank the retiring board for the humble opportunity to serve at their side for the previous two years. My appreciation for each of the people who sat at the board table and for those who now assumed their place grows out of sincere belief that none of us acts independently of one another. As elected members of a governing body, no one is or can ever be more or less than what the whole becomes. Our fortunes are not merely of our own choosing. We always act within a given context ripe with boundaries, limitations, expectations, and potentiality. We can be as good or as bad as we allow ourselves to be, but we aren't solitary actors and none of us has an exclusive claim to the truth. Consider for a moment the following examples of a school board's duties. We are presented with lots of data. Every piece of data is dissected in terms of multiple vantage points taken by our colleagues. When assessed collaboratively, the data guides our choices, but when done individually, it weaponizes our biases. Approving a budget and annual levy encompasses a discussion influenced by the numerous inquiries that each of us makes. When treated as a collective pursuit for clarity, our efforts produce a unified outcome that provides students with the resources they deserve instead of an outcome supported by some and opposed by others. Program evaluation, student services, early childhood learning, progress towards meeting long-range goals, and public engagement unfolds as part of an ongoing iteration of ideas, questions, and answers among and between school administrators and fellow board members. When pursued with one voice, we authentically speak for the district and avoid cross-cutting and narrower messages. Every comment on any subject is part of a chain of comments. Every vote cast in regards to how others vote. Every moment shared, no matter the temper of our minds or the nature of the outcome. What is done and will be done has its origin in the, in the interplay between colleagues. We're part of a community of actors with a common goal to govern in the interest of kids. Now, during points of conflict, our connectedness appears to fade, but even in disagreement, we are bound together. There's a yin for every yang, a cause for every condition, an equal and opposite reaction to every act, an effect for every action. And once back in harmony, we easily see our image in one another and wonder, "Why didn't I see you clearly before?" In truth, seven strangers from seven different worldviews have no choice but to rely on one another. The only question is, what will we make of each other? Something better, I hope, more than what we can be alone. Our school community needs for us to firmly grasp the threads that bind us. I submit that our egos, our resentments, our fears are just forms of ignorance that we needn't surrender to. Our interdependence is undeniable. Our capacity for good is unlimited. Our time together is precious. It's not by chance alone that we find ourselves together. Every new board carries forward an imprint from the old. Tonight, we rightfully celebrate both a transition brimming with exciting possibilities and a continuation of the good works of our peers. Therefore, let us pause and be ever mindful that how we treat each other and what we do as a board constructs an indelible legacy with profound implication for our children's lives. We have been tasked by the community, in whose name we act, to preserve what is best, to make better what can be improved, to leave behind what isn't working, and to be well-prepared for the minutia and the sublime aspects of school governance. At all, at all times, our work should be done with unfailing respect for the teachers, paraprofessionals, school staff, principals, and district administrators, administrators who deliver and manage our schools. They are our partners in this wonderful endeavor. And as we make decisions on behalf of our school community, we should do so with a healthy dose of humility, an understanding and unfailing regard for our proper role, and finally, by all means, with just a little grace towards one another. Thank you all. Now let us begin. It's always good to have that ovation led by your daughter and your wife. So, on the agenda are the action items, and is it, are we really reading each of the motions here? Is that still, all right, here we go.
Yeah, it's still kind of protocol.
Okay. Under new business, so under new business, to establish the time, date, and place for regular board meetings. And may I have a motion to establish the 219, 220 school board calendar as presented? I need a motion.
Motion.
Yes. And now I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Now, Ms. Moke.
If I, for a moment, because I can't really hear everybody.
Okay.
Second. Motion, or she was motion, Linda was motion. I have a second.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're at the point where we're having a discussion about the board calendar. Was there a calendar? I didn't look at the board back.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Were there any questions about the board calendar? We had, we had proposed going to the second Monday and the fourth Monday as opposed to the first and the third, and the rationale was there were many conflicts staying with that first and the third. It was difficult for the district and sometimes board members to get ready. There were also issues coming off of breaks, I think, and so the recommendation is that we go to the second and the fourth. I saw no reason not to work with that calendar.
It's still seven o'clock.
It's still seven o'clock. Jason will still have a 10-minute grace period.
Thank you.
You're got it.
And how does that position us with the District 87 and the Village Board, the other, those are the other bodies?
Probably conflating. But we...
We did with some.
We have all.
Yeah.
No. Okay. All right. So then, Ms. Moke, a roll call on this, please.
Ms. Buttermer?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Excuse me, yes.
Mr. Ian Brozio?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Lobach?
Yes.
Dr. Bruno?
Yes. Second item is the, we don't have to do this, huh? Affirmation of treasurer's appointment. I need a motion to affirm Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Facilities, and Operations Eric DePorter as the District 41 Treasurer.
Motion. Jessica.
Any discussion?
Eric, Eric.
Hearing, hearing none. Eric, you've done a fabulous job. It's good to be able to keep you in this position.
I'm gonna take over here in a second. I gotta throw Tim this again, so we can move things along.
Ms. Moke.
Mr. Ian Brozio?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Lobach?
Yes.
Dr. Bruno?
Yes. Additional item to designate banks of depository for district funds. May I have a motion to designate banks of depository for district funds as MB Financial, ISDLAF, BMO Harris, MBS Fifth Third? Need a motion?
Sorry, I wasn't certain.
We get a motion from Jason and we got a second from Bruce. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Buttermer?
Yes.
Mr. Lobach?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Yes. Next item, affirmation of the Board of Education Code of Conduct. Per Board Policy 2.80, Board Member Oath and Conduct, the school board must affirm the adopted Board Member Code of Conduct. This code includes the following. And here it is. Board Member Code of Conduct. As a member of my local school board, I will do my utmost to represent the public interest in education by adhering to the following standards and principles. I will represent all school district constituents honestly and equally and refuse to surrender my responsibility to special interests or partisan political groups. I will avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety which could result from my position and will not use my board membership for personal gain or publicity. I will recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a board meeting. I will take no private action that might compromise the board or administration and will respect the confidentiality of privileged information. I will abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. I will encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and will participate in board discussions in an open, honest, and respectful manner honoring differences of opinion or perspective. I will prepare for, attend, and actively participate in school board meetings. I will be sufficiently informed about and prepared to act on the specific issues before the board and remain reasonably knowledgeable about local, state, national, and global education issues. I will respectfully listen to those who communicate with the board, seeking to understand their views while recognizing my responsibility to represent the interest of the entire community. I will strive for a positive working relationship with the superintendent, respecting the superintendent's authority to advise the board, implement board policy, and administer the district. I will model continuous learning and work to ensure good governance by taking advantage of board member development opportunities such as those sponsored by my state and National School Board Association and encourage my fellow board members to do the same. And finally, I will strive to keep my board focused on its primary work of clarifying the district's purpose, direction, goals, and monitoring district performance. I'm assuming no one needs for me to read that again.
No. Would you, would you sign?
I have to sign.
And then send it around the table.
I will do that.
Thank you, sir.
Let's just do it. Linda, right here. Over here, Jess. They didn't tell you had to have a working pen, huh, Julie?
It was earlier.
Oh, don't you feel relieved?
Thank you, board members.
Do I need a motion to affirm it now that we've all signed it?
Yes, let's affirm this.
Let's affirm. How about a motion that we...
Motion.
Second, please.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, yeah. Roll call. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
And on the agenda of, under other, we have an item dealing with board committee representatives, and Paul, you have a few things to share with us.
Yeah, just on the board packet, page 16, 17, and 18 are the different committees. If you could look those over and please send Bob, myself, an email letting us know which committees you would like to serve on. So please, there are some that, like the CIT, where it's by contractual obligation that the board president will serve on it, but there are other committees that, that are open. And from there, the board president will make the selection as to whom will sit at each of those committees. So look that over and within the next week, we would appreciate an email back on those committees that you would like to serve.
Very good. So now, part of the agenda, the upcoming meetings. May 6th, Special Board Orientation Meeting, starting at 4:35 here at CSO. And then the regular board meeting will begin at 7:00. Then May 20th, regular board meeting, 7:00 CSO. And then finally, June 3rd, regular board meeting, 7:00 at CSO. All right. May I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting? Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.